Oh elf daddy being all emo back here in the corner.
I mean it, it does look like flutter shy, so.
I still refuse to change it because I know what it is.
We believe you.
Liquid, are you Joe Jameson or whatever his name is? From Spider-Man?
I don't know, I just found the skin.
It looks like the, the reporter from Spider-Man.
You're totally right.
It's the suspenders, I think. And the mustache.
Bandit, don't you fucking dare.
Tammy's here!
I'm here, I just muted myself because I was insulted by Push the Talk.
JJ Jameson.
This is a lot of people.
Yes.
Alright, let's get this party started!
What? Why was I kicked?
Go or not authorized to ring the bell in Town Hall? You guys got four minutes!
I'm coming!
So rude.
Is there a stat for how many times people get kicked?
So where's the, so where's the tunnel?
Spawned.
I see.
Uh...
The brick building. Right across from where you come out. And then you spawn at spawn at first.
There's four people that have a kill. That Mr Burke has two. Mocha has one, Pogo Sam has one, and Pelsia has one. Have a kill, because they're murderers.
We don't, we don't know why Mr Burke has kills because he was only on this server for like ten minutes. And he wasn't near anybody, so we think that part's glitched out.
Oh! What? 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 He shot you through the building!
What just happened?
Technically did not happen in Town Hall.
Wait, who got shot? Oh god, what?
How did that happen?
Hello?
Oh, okay.
Um, somehow I shot you through the wall.
Oh god.
Wait, what? There's wires?
Oh hello.
Hello, Mr. Eric. Just don't shoot each other, no weapons, I swear to god. Else I'm gonna shoot you.
There's a wooden bowl up there that's yours too.
Okay, no armor, no armor. And no weapons. CC.
I just wanted to be, I just wanted to turn...
I think Alex might have gotten most of my stuff.
Oh, I have a pickaxe, I think that she was...
Oh right, Azander's called Alex.
Uh...
Um, he just walked in. Standing here menacingly? Behind the wall, behind the glass.
Did you pick up a fishing rod?
Uh, I threw one down to you.
I, I feel like uh, this town hall is not big enough for this amount of people.
Did you get one with uh, mending and curse of vanishing on it?
I did not, just that base one. So they might get Alex's.
Yeah, I think he would have got it.
I mean, were you wearing the curse of vanishing thing?
Oh no!
Cause that's kind of what curse of vanishing does.
I might have had it equipped when he shot me.
I wasn't the one ringing the bell! Oh, sorry.
Hey Alex, do you have a uh...
Oh, come on!
Fishing rod in your inventory?
On curse of vanishing.
Uh, what are we looking for?
Uh, fishing rod with uh, mending and curse of vanishing.
I didn't know that uh, you're countering the bell, I'm sorry.
Let's see, here is, do you have fish?
I had fish.
I don't think it needs to be specifically equipped for it to vanish, I think it will just disappear if you had it in your inventory.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Oh no.
Oh god, send me a DM, I'll give it to you later.
Okay.
I can spare a mending fishing rod if you need.
It's five o'clock, somewhere.
I think it's five o'clock, about two time zones over.
Who is not here?
Yeah, does anyone need to teleport? Say something in chat, not in game.
I'm technically, I'm technically not there, but that's by choice because uh, ha- half of my armor is almost broken, so I'm heading over to my base real quick, it's fine, I'll be there late. Uh, I'm fine with that.
I can just do a TPL. Alright, anyways, um... I can pull up my agenda here, I've got written out. Alright, thank you everyone for coming to uh, what a patriotic evening, we're all gonna let our voice be heard and cast our votes for what we want to do. Um, as this place is kind of a sanctuary, why don't we all go ahead and unequip our swords and armor, because clearly this is a peaceful place.
Gembriside, we're looking at you.
He is AFK.
I don't know, delete their inventory.
Uh, let's see, so, first order on the agenda tonight, some of you may have heard the news, earlier today the village was under attack by a raid. Um, someone came, they came for our, our dear mayor, behind the glass over there, they wanted his blood. However, some valiant people not only came to defend him, but also sounded the alarm, I wanna give a special thank you to uh, Pelsia Hazardous Wizard, Hero and Maket Paketa, I don't know how to say that name, and uh, Tammy for uh, sounding the alarm on Discord as well. Um, so uh, are each of those people here? Is any of those people not here?
Uh, I'm here.
Wait, I, I...
I wasn't even online.
Right, but you at least started spamming Discord, which is cool.
Oh, cool.
So uh, uh, we'll start with Tammy, come on up and uh, take uh, take a little award here for your um... And uh, Pelsia, come on up.
Woo!
Oh my god, oh my god.
And who cares that that was me who started, ah, who started the raid, I mean...
Hey, yeah!
Holy shit, that, that's an honor!
Just say paket, it's okay. Oh, thank you, thanks!
Yo, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
We're heroes.
We're heroes.
Thank you.
Hero, come on up and grab your uh, key to the city.
Woo! Round of applause for everyone!
Cat just farted during the meeting, oh my god.
Okay, no applause.
Thank you guys for your help saving the mayor, protecting the city and the server.
Thank you!
Tammy met uh, her own personal cat, not me.
Yeah! I didn't think about that! My cat's on my desk, contacts, and she has horrible fucking gas, oh my god.
Um, alright, second order of business, oh, um, let's see, some people may have noticed that around spawn and your builds, there's been someone grieving. Grieving the server with uh, scarecrows, if anyone has any information who's been doing that, please come forward, um... Need to get to the bottom of this mystery of who's been scared of the crow in this city. If anyone has any information, please step forward, by the way.
Is, is it grieving if it doesn't hurt anyone?
I mean, it could be emotional damage, people get scared, they're scarecrows.
Emotional damage!
I think we just figured out who did it. They just asked if it was grieving or not, so...
Who asked? Actually, I might put them down on the suspect list, who was at the desk?
Does anybody know who resides at 221B?
I actually haven't been to that place yet, I can't find someone to go halves with me. Oatmeal is sus, I'm just saying.
What? What? We can greet too, in the most horrible places!
Alright, moving on, um, let's see, Doc Calm, could you please step forward?
Ooh, are they awake?
Uh, Doc Calm has some suggestions, I don't know if you wanted to speak here, or if you just want me to bring it up.
Mouse, where are you?
Hello, everybody!
Hello!
Hello!
Uh, I'm Doc Calm, um, I have a few proposals I'd like to put forth if I may just have a moment of your time. Um, item one, I think it might be very useful if we had an inn nearby, um, to rest at, if we get to spawn early before Town Hall meetings and a place to maybe to sleep, you know, phantoms can be rather scary near a cliff. Um, item two, I, as some of you, uh, some of you might know, I found an underground city just below spawn, and I feel like it's kind of going to waste to have something so close to spawn and not do anything with it build-wise. Um, I haven't got any great ideas, we already have a shopping district. But maybe another hub down there might be a good idea, um, just a proposal. Um, item three, uh, I, uh, I'm a bit of an idiot, I'll be honest here, and I have dyslexia. So navigating all the different Discord channels can be a little bit difficult to try and find certain information, like um, any announcements or things like that, I know some people, can't speak for everybody, but I know some people, um, continue to ask about when the world border was expanding in the first couple of days, even though it was posted in a few places. So maybe having a place to see such information would be very beneficial for all of us. Um, now, uh, I did talk to uh, uh, Azander there, um, about it, and he came up with the suggestion that maybe we could put the announcement channel to use, and he could post votes, like people can give it a thumbs up, thumbs down if they like it, or they do like it, or any announcements in there, and delete them after a few days when it's no longer useful. Or we can make some new text channels to post announcements, rules, or um, stuff along those lines. Um, I think what Azander said was actually the right way to go, having too many text channels might be a problem, but I thought I'd still mention it in case anyone thought differently. Uh, that's everything I have to say, uh, thank you very much, I tried to speed through that as quick as I could. Um, I hope what I said is somewhat useful.
Thank you, Doc! Yeah, so um, I do think it'd be a good idea to maybe put an inn somewhere, so people could have at least a place for temporary beds, there is one upstairs, and actually this kind of is what this was gonna be, this building, like an inn first, but someone said, oh, make a town hall, and that was my idea. Um, as for like announcements and stuff, we should totally be utilizing that channel for things like this, I'm just, you know, uh, hadn't really thought of it, so appreciate that, we'll try to use that as we go forward. Um, anyone else have any uh, comments they wanted to add for Doc?
Uh, yeah, we could uh, post the results of previous votes in that channel too, that would be maybe useful.
Well, the thing is, we don't have votes on things that often, I kind of, I'm just trying to force activity in the server, so I'm like, everyone come to Town Hall!
Which for the record, I love the forced activity.
I, yeah, otherwise I wouldn't show it.
I agree, I, I understand the idea of, um, if we, because I, I did foresee the problem if we put votes or anything in the Discord channel, it might make it so people don't want to come to Town Hall anymore, which can be a problem. I've been all honesty, I am, I still wanted to put it forward, just in case.
Yeah, and I appreciate it.
It turns out to a hedge.
Yeah.
So...
Absolutely, party afterwards, that's sure. Um, alright, next order of business, Mr....
I got something, real quick. So, in the back of our shop, I have some chests with free stuff, and it's like if you die, or you just need a safe place, there's some meat and some bed. So, we have a shop, it's that way, um, because I didn't realize about the thing downstairs, but um, there's free stuff in the back, so if you end up at spawn, or if you're a new player or whatnot, and you need meat or a bed, we currently provide those in the very back of our shop, so it's free to anybody.
Is that the brown building on the south side of the road as you go across the bridge?
Yes, one with the copper roof.
Where the meat is, I saw the meat sign, and I kinda...
We were gonna spam some advertising for the free meat and free beds over there too, we just haven't done any.
Get your oatmeal meat, I'm sorry, no, maybe that's...
Oatmeat?
Oatmeat!
No, we guarantee it is definitely made from pure cow.
Um, again, I'm on our last meeting, I did uh, put a shout out to across the street, uh, Rotten Church of Flesh has an outpost for free beds if anyone needs it. However, if you've been on the server for a week at this point and have beds, uh, what are you doing? And we got some...
Frost, really.
Um, alright, next, can we have uh, Mr. X Shepard come on up? Uh, Shepard, uh, if uh, we go, whenever we expand the server borders, looking for someone to maybe explore and build with, uh, if anyone's looking, I don't know if you had something you want to say or anything, you don't have to, but...
Oh, that's tragic.
He's muted, so he may be typing, that's okay.
I don't really have anything for you guys to say, but uh, appreciate it if anybody wants to make a base together.
There you have it, ladies and gentlemen.
We're so sorry.
Alright, um, so, that is, I think mostly all I have to discuss here in the room, um, except, let's see, is Macro D here, I don't think he is, is he in voice?
Uh, I saw, yeah, I saw his name in there. Hey Mac, you, you here?
I'm here.
Oh, here he is, hey, Macro D, you don't have to say much if you don't want, but before we uh, settle down to a vote, um, Macro D has something he wants to share with the entire server, um, it is a shopping district arcade below spawn, some of you, you have already, um, already uh, discovered it, have come across it, and read some signs and that sort of thing, and we were going to take a little field trip over there, kind of show you uh, the, one of the main entryways, kind of how to easily navigate it, and how the rules and stuff of it are gonna work, so, Mac, did you have anything you want to say before we went down?
Nope, but uh, you'll be leading the way, right?
Yes, let's all head out real quick.
Okay, yeah.
And um, go outside of Town Hall. Head towards the spawn hall, and lead outside of the building out here. So um, it's kind of a water elevator, you got the left to go down, right to go up, let's all go to the very bottom floor, um, as you go down, you're gonna hit different layers, and hopefully no one dies going through this thing, but uh... Just wanna meet at the bottom floor.
I'm scared now.
Yeah, we're all naked, mostly all naked.
Yeah, so we'll make it because we know sometimes... You know, rogue bandits.
So what's that?
Okay, why do tropical fish keep showing up in the elevator? Do they just spawn in there?
I have been spawned in mine.
Yeah, sure.
Might spawn in lush caves, I think, I'm not hunting.
Yeah, spawn in the source blocks.
So, for the most part, in this place, you know, it is a little um, tricky to navigate if you're not used to walking around here, but, if you use the water elevator to get to the different floors, here each water elevator, there's going to be a directory where you can um, access this lectern, and anyone can go here, and if you have a shop on that corresponding floor, that's where you can add your shop. What, what shop you have, and maybe what you sell, like a little description, the shops are listed by like floor one, and you have A, floor one A and B, and then floor two, A, B, C, D, whatever, I like to like, I think four floors. So um, there are trapdoors everywhere, a very beautiful building technique, if I do say so myself.
Hmm.
Um, here, but help this, by the way, you did a fantastic job, it's just, I feel like I'm more, when I look up.
Oh yeah, good job.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, how long does this take?
A week.
Like uh, I thought, like, I could... Like this would take me ages, this would take me months to build on my own.
It's awesome, and um...
I just wouldn't know that I'd get distracted.
It, it, there is, um, oh, and I forgot to mention, at the uh, top of the elevator, at the building, is a book, a lectern, oop, someone's drowning. Pretty okay? At the uh, top of the, of the elevator in the first building is a lectern that goes through all the rules and like how it works, you know, it's all free, you know, um, you get one shop each, you know, you can share a shop with someone, and it's all written there, do you, uh, do you have, want to make a shop there?
We'll be expanding this, right, I'm still expanding, probably around thirty, thirty shop in total, currently we have twenty shops. So, I'm planning to have as many as we can, side of the mountain, so... So everyone could have their own shop.
If we have a shop, are there any rules about decorating the exterior of it?
Um, no. You're, you're free to change the, even the, the structure, if you'd like.
Yeah, it's totally up to Mac, because he's put all the work into it, but I would almost even recommend, you know, um, decorating the exterior to a certain way to where it does stand out, so when people are like, looking for shops, it's easier to see if one's vacant, or ooh, someone's added something to that, that one, you know, floor, uh, 3B.
Uh, if anybody has any soul sand on them, I think putting some soul sand in this water elevator would prevent the fish from dying in there.
Yes. Uh, I got a lot from the underground city, I found, just below spawn, so I have more than I need, I can donate a few to the project.
Okay, cool.
Um, do you know off by hand how much you'd need, would it just be the one, or would you like more?
I would just need one.
Just one, okay.
Thank you.
I will make sure after this meeting to go straight back to my base and bring it straight away, so there's no waiting.
Alright, once everyone's done touring the uh, shopping arcade, let's all meet back up to Town Hall for a very special discussion on whether we should open another world border.
Team, I'm a builder! Woo!
If anyone, uh, before we cast our vote, anyone and everyone's uh, can come up to the lectern and, you know, say their piece on how they feel, how they do.
Has, I don't know how to get back upstairs!
Follow me, follow me, follow me. I think it's this way.
My god, we weren't even that far, I was lost.
It's fine, just, you just have to swim up, just keep swimming.
Do, do we have, do we have two people from each position that, like, I like the idea of having, yeah.
I'm indecisive, so um, I could debate both sides at the same time.
I, I would like to, I, I could go for being on one side.
I was actually gonna call Tammy up, she seems very passionate on the whole subject all week, so...
Oh wow!
Let's go get here, if Tammy would come up and uh...
Alright.
There's a chicken in Town Hall!
Yeah, I'm right here. Do you have a TP all command?
Look at me, it wasn't me that chat.
Chaos. Have you learned nothing from Zelda?
Alright, I think we're mostly all back, so uh, Tammy, you have the floor, I don't know how you feel.
I just wanna start off by saying, anyone who doesn't vote for what I, I'm voting for, you're getting banned from the server, like, that's just the reality, um, we should definitely be voting... We should definitely be voting for the border expansion, and there's just so many reasons why, first of all, I know we got our starter bases, but don't y'all want to start looking where like, your, your base base might go? What about the facts that, what about villages, villagers, iron farms, sand, freaking sand, camels, sniffers? All that good stuff!
Can I add an addendum to Tammy?
You can add your own pieces once Tammy's done, but if Tammy's your own very passionate speech, let's all get around and follow up with Tammy.
I believe Cat has prepared something for this meeting, so I just want y'all to know that she's her turn to.
I did not, Tammy, I accidentally deleted it, sorry.
You accidentally deleted it? Aw, dude!
Nero, you have the floor.
Uh, Cat, Cat can go first.
Alright, Cat, go ahead, Cat.
Um, so, as we talked about earlier, the world border is only seven hundred and fifty blocks in each direction, and the nether offers kind of two things to it, first, nether-related, nether-specific materials, and quick travel, we already have quick travel because the border is not very far. So fundamentally, it's a debate about which resources we want to get to first, um, and I would very much like to go experience everything that came in this new version with y'all tonight, tomorrow, this weekend. Uh, and that is on the other side of the world border, not in the nether.
Thank you.
Shut it. I'm not you, the, the person who did the creepy sounds.
Alright, well, how are you, Hero, thank you for coming.
I'm, I'm good, thank you for having, uh, I, just to expand on what Cat said, uh, since, you know, the fast travel, if we open the nether, we're only gonna be able to travel like a hundred blocks in any direction, so, it wouldn't...
It would be at seven fifty, I think.
Ah, okay.
But if you made like a portal at seven fifty, I think it would just come back to the world border as close as it could in, in the overworld, but I'd leave that to anyone brave enough to try.
Just die of hunger immediately, uh, yeah, so I, I feel like uh, o- opening the nether, we couldn't even really establish our pathways the, the way we normally would yet anyway without an open border.
Thank you, Hero.
Hail globalism, go!
Can we oatmeal up on the uh, oh, sorry, not oatmeal, who was next, Care Bear?
Care Bear was next.
Up at the podium?
Oh, come on!
Is it bad? He's actually starting to convince me!
Fair point, Care Bear, fair point.
Alright, we have our first vote for the inn, the uh, the independent uh, party. Thank you, Care Bear, very well put.
Care Bear would know a lot about friendship.
Oatmeal, welcome, thanks for coming.
Hello, hello, hello again, um, I, I have a legal pad in front of me, because Has and I have uh, talked about this a lot, and we decided to write it down. I have pros for both the world border and nether, and cons for both of them, so for the world border, villagers, mending, mangrove forest, give froggies, froggies are really great, they're cute, and also, you know, if we had the nether as well, they would eat mag cream and give us pretty frog lights, and then, there's the desert, which gives us sand, we need sand, everybody needs sand, sand makes glass, and makes sandstone, sand is just, you know, I never thought I'd miss sand, but you know, I want a nice beach day. Also, archaeology would be really fun, and we could go exploring, and then camel... Also, archaeology would be really fun, and we could go exploring, and then camels, camel! Camels! Um, and then, um, number four is more exploring, exploring's very good. And then number five, we could get terracotta! I really want terracotta, I know some of y'all are probably just like, eh, terracotta, but I'm the builder, so, terracotta, go! And then, six oceans, we can get kelp, you know, kelp, I need somebody! And then also ocean monuments with guardians, prismarine, that stuff is really, really nice, pretty, I like it. And then also guardians give a lot of XP, that'd be great. Yes, yes, Azander, I, I like your kelp message. And then also, number seven, for pros for the world border, slimes, we could build slime farms and the swampies. And that would be really fun. And then, cons would be, there's no inventory management yet, because we won't have ender chests, because we won't have blaze rods if we do the world border, and then also, it would be kinda difficult to travel because you know, it'd be very, very far, it'd be hard to do pathways and horsies, and we don't have elytra, and that's kind of sad. But, we have seven pros, so that's really nice. But the nether, we have six pros and not seven, and they're just blaze rods for, you know, potions, ender chests, quartz for redstone, with glowstone for lighting up things, shroomies, so we have the warped wood, and then the other wood that I can never remember, but it's very nice and pink, that would go very nicely with some cherry wood. And then we have netherite, which would be great, but it's only seven fifties, so I doubt that there'd be enough netherite for everybody on the server with only an a seven fifty border. And then, we have magma cream, which, you know, is great for fireproof potions, but you know, it's not much else, without the froggies, we can't get the frog lights from the magma creams, they're basically useless. So I think I've talked myself into a hole, that um, the world border is the best. Thank you for listening to my dead talk.
Clap, clap, clap.
Thank you, very valid points. Uh, let's see, can we get Jember Sight up on the stand, please? Thanks for coming, Jember Sight, I think he's typing up a little message here, I can't remember if he uses my phone. Sometimes. This is uh, quite the public speaking event for those who may be nervous otherwise. He's gonna try to talk the other side.
Maybe if it cheers the mountains.
Yes.
Redstone things. Servers, yep, quartz. Thank you, um, appreciate it. Uh, do, um, well, let's take a pause here, do we have anyone that is in favor of the nether that wanted to come up and speak?
I, I do, although I don't know if I could say much, I, I just think
Uh, can we scare Rabbit up front here at the podium, please?
I just think